All right. If everybody could have a seat, we're gonna start our Metro Planning Commission meeting for March 23rd, 2017. I want to welcome everyone down here. But I'm gonna ask the commissioners if I could take a special, personal privilege moment. We, and if y'all will just, we have a very special day here, and I want to recognize two commissioners that have been with us on the commission for a long, a long time. And rarely do you see volunteers be on a planning commission for over 16 years. So today, it's, I'm thrilled and sad to say that these two special individuals, which is Chairman Jim McLean and Commissioner Stuart Clifton, have served the city very, very well. They've helped shape smart growth policies such as the award-winning Nashville Next, helped start and shape community planning in its infancy. They've been really what I would consider champions of their community. I would definitely say that I've enjoyed working with them while I was a councilman and coming down and testifying before, before this body. They've truly made Nashville a better place to live. They should be proud of their accomplishments and their outstanding service to the city. I will tell you that without these two individuals, the, the commission wouldn't be where we're at today. And so I wanted to just give them a round of applause, if, if you would, so. Well, also, I'm just, I want to say, the chairman has been really a big mentor of mine in being here, I think, I've been here six years, and he's taught me a lot, and I would like to make a special request of, of the commission, if that's okay, to allow the chairman to chair his last planning commission meeting. So, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay, I'm gonna swap seats with you and hand you the gavel for your last meeting.
It'll be an honor.
So here we go.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair.
I appreciate your invite, Bob. So you know who's chairman. Well, all the commissioners, I, I thank you for all the kind words, and the record shows, and I talked to Stuart earlier about this, we came on the same day, but Stuart has a habit of running just a little bit late, so I was here earlier. So actually, I've served more time than you have, so, so longest serving, you're second, so. But thank you for all your comments and all your help through the years, and feel like that the commissioners that we have now, that we're gonna be in good shape for the future. And, so we'll get on with the show. So, I guess the first thing is recognizing the, any council members? No, adoption of the agenda. Already forgot how to run the meeting. Is there any changes to the agenda?
That's different.
Motion, the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I need approval of the minutes of March 9, 2017. If there's any additions or corrections, need to know that this time.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the minutes of March 9, 2017. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Council members, I know Councilman Davis is here, if you'd like to speak now. Oh, Councilman, before you speak, I want to recognize somebody in the audience. Phil Ponder is here. Phil served as a council member. If you'd stand up, Phil. Phil's had a little accident, but he and I, we started serving together. He served as vice chair under me for a while, and acted chair when I wasn't there, and Phil's a good friend, and I forgot to recognize him a minute ago, so, thank you.
He's also our stand-in. Every time we need a commissioner to come and fill his seat, he's always willing to do that, and so we appreciate his service very much.
As much as, you know, I'm gonna be sad to see you go, sir, even though I know you need the rest, and you've committed a lot to this community and given a lot of your time to this commission, and it's kinda sad that, you know, this will be my 100th and 25th bill. Well. And, and a little bit of an anniversary there. So you've probably, you've served on this commission for all 125th of five of these, purely rezoning, which includes policy amendments, too, within that. So I just want to thank you for your leadership, and just want to thank you. And out of those 125, 119 have been approved with the blessing of this commi, of this commission. And this one is on consent, but this one is very special to me. This is, I'm here for bill number 2017. It's SP dash 025 dash 001, 1424 Stainback Avenue. This is a piece of property to allow a dadu for one of my Highland Heights community leaders and their family. Before, when they were renting this out, this dadu was rented out for $500 a month. It's in very good condition. However, though, I'm a terrible developer, wanted the property, because if you could tear down the property, you could build three houses by right, those little lot lines underneath there. So they turned them into codes. And my neighbors being such good sports and wanting to follow the rules to the T, stopped renting it when the codes person said they couldn't rent, even though they've been renting it out since 2001, and they bought the house in 2001 on the premise that this will help pay for their mortgage. And what I'm proud to say, though, out of those 125 rezonings, 80 of those have been for neighbors that live in my district. And this is one of those for neighbors that are in my district. And so I'm very proud of this, but more importantly, I want all of us to participate in this growth of Nashville. But when I see my constituents get bullied, I get angry. And I want to thank the planning commission for making this work. I want to thank Doug and her, and his staff. I want to thank Carrie Logan and Lisa especially for figuring out a way so this could be approved on the agenda, and so this could sail right through. And I just want to thank the planning staff for making this happen for one of my community leaders in Highland Heights and their family. And so we're going forward with an approved bill, and they're able to continue to lease that building out as a, as an affordable use, but more importantly, it will enable the family to continue to live and prosper in my neighborhood. And I just want to thank the planning staff from the bottom of my heart for making this work and making this in compliance. And Doug, thank you, they worked very hard on this. And these neighbors are very special to me, and I just want to thank you, I really mean this. For this to be the last bill I have in front of you is very special to me, Chairman, and I want to thank you for your service to my community over the, over the years. So please approve this bill, and it's on consent, hopefully it stays on consent. And I also want to say, I am an advocate for sidewalks also. Part of me thinks there's a better way to kinda make everybody happy for the neighbors to get their sidewalks with a sidewalk bill coming up, and more importantly, there may be a better way in order to do some sort of bonding or something, so we can make the neighbors happy, and so the developers and the regular citizens can build their sidewalks quickly, but also the city can get their money. And more importantly, we want to do this because every neighborhood should have sidewalks, and I'm a big advocate for this. So please support Angie Henderson's bill and her recommendations. Thank you.
Councilman, that's on consent right now, so it shouldn't be any problem, and I want to thank you for your comments, and you and I worked together in your district quite hard, so we'll, we'll continue to do that. Thank you. Councilman Weathers. You don't want to wait? Okay. Council Lady Henderson?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. If I may, I'm here to speak on two items today. So there's also an item on consent, item number 21, the Sneed Estates subdivision, and if it will remain on consent, it's not necessary.
It's on consent right now.
Okay. Well, we had a, hosted a community meeting, and adjacent and affected neighbors came in support of that, and so I just wanted to express my support as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Swob.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other councilmen in the audience that have overlooked? Okay. Lisa, you, you run the show there? Or Bob doing it? Okay, Bob. Items to be deferred or withdrawn?
Yes, we have several items to be deferred, starting with item 2A, case 2016 CP dash 014, the Donaldson Hermannage Old Hickory Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer that to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. And I'll note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on item 2A. The associated zone change with that one is case 2B, 2016 SP dash 021 dash 001. This is the Hesse-Hoggett Ford SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on, on item 2B as well. Next item is item 3A, case 2017 CP dash 012 dash 001. This is the Southeast Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on that item as well. And the associated zone change with that one is case 3B, case 2017 SP dash 023 dash 001. This is the Burkett Ridge SP, and staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting, and Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on, on item 3B as well. Next item on the deferral list is item 5, case 2016 SP dash 098 dash 001. This is at 910 and 912 North Second Street, a rezoning request. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. Next item's item 6, case 2017 SP dash 012 dash 001. This is rezoning at 730 Old Hickory Boulevard for an SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 7, case 2017 SP dash 020 dash 001. This is the Fairfield Inn and Suites rezoning for an SP at 109, 111, and 113th, 29th Avenue North to permit a hotel. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting, and I will note that Commissioner Atkins is recusing himself on that item. Next item's item 8, case 2017 SP dash 021 dash 001. This is the rezoning for the Glen Rose SP at 98 Rose Street and 99 Evelyn Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. Next item's on the deferral list is item 9, case 2016 S dash 253 dash 001. This is a subdivision at 1601 Jones Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. Next item's item 10, case 2017 S S dash 012 dash 001, the Binkley Property Subdivision replat of Lot 1. Staff recommends deferral to the May 11th Planning Commission meeting. Next item's item 11, case 2017 S dash 033 dash 001, the Highland View at the Knob subdivision plat at 5710 Knob Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. Next item's item 12, case 2017 S dash 035 dash 001, the Hall Estates Section 3 re-subdivision at 5024 Trousdale Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 13, case 2017 S dash 043 dash 001. This is the Trail Hollow subdivision at 3501 Trail Hollow Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 11th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 15, case 2006 SP dash 181 dash 001, the Evergreen Hills SP Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. Item 16 is the case 2016 SP dash 062 dash 001, the Earhart subdivision. It's actually a request to rezone from RS 15 to SP zoning along Earhart Road for 202 units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. Next item's case, item 20, case 2016 S dash 102 dash 001, the Keeneland Downs subdivision. It's a revision to a concept plan at 6033 Mountview Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. Next item on the deferral list is case, or item number 27A, case 2017 SP dash 027 dash 001, the Bel Air Mansion located along Lebanon Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 27th Planning Commission meeting. And the associated case is with that is 27B, case 2017 HL dash 004 dash 001, the Bel Air Mansion Historic Landmark, and the staff recommendation is to defer to the April 27th Planning Commission meeting. And those are all of the items on the, the deferral list.
Bob, if you would, for the sake of all the commissioners and myself, if you'd go back through and call out the numbers again, so we know which ones were deferred.
Sure. Items 2A, 2B, 3A, 3B, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 20, 27A, and 27B.
Okay, Commissioner, you've heard the items that have been requested to be deferred. Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion, second, to defer these items. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on consent, Bob?
Yes. Before I get to the consent items, as information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with the decision made by the planning commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the planning commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following items into the record, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these items removed from the consent. Starting with item number 4, case 2016 SP dash 045 dash 003, the 12th and Wedgewood SP. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 14, case 88P dash 040 dash 001. This is the Comfort Inn and Suites Planned Unit Development District at 627 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, and I will note that Chairman Atkins is recusing himself on that item. Next item is item 17, case 2017 SP dash 008 dash 001, 400 Hume Street specific plan. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 18, case 2017 SP dash 025 dash 001, 1424 Stainback Avenue SP. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on item 18. Next item's item 19, case 2016 S dash 002 HM dash 001. This is a house move application at 3106 Curtis Street, and the staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item's item 21, case 2017 S dash 015 dash 001, the Sneed Estates subdivision at 4224 and 4228 Wallace Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 22, case 2017 S dash 040 dash 001. The staff recommend, or, this is the Monticello Valley subdivision for 29 cluster lots at Mon, Monticello Drive. This is, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 23, case 2005 UD dash 009 dash 007, the Belcourt Village Urban Design Overlay in Hillsborough Village at 2111 and 2113 Belcourt Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on item 23. Next item is item 24, case 79 dash 87P dash 001. This is the Calumet Planned Unit Development District located along Hamilton Church Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, and I will note that Commissioner McLean is recusing himself on that item. Next item is item 25, case 2017 Z dash 031 PR dash 001. This is a request to rezone from R8 to IWD at 2923 Brick Church Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. And item 26 was removed from the consent. Item 28 is a contract amendment for Andrew Collins, and the recommendation is to approve. Item 29 is a contract between Smart Growth America and the Nashville Davidson County Planning Commission acting on behalf of the Nashville MPO for, for general transportation planning activities as outlined in fiscal year 17 Unified Planning Work Program. Staff recommendation is to approve. And item 30 is certification of the downtown code bonus height compliance for 1200 Broadway. Staff recommendation is to approve. And the last item is item 34, which is to accept the director's report and approve the administrative items.
See. Bob, again, if you'd go through those items, list them, so that we know which ones are gonna be on consent.
Sure. The items on consent are item 4, 14, 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 28, 29, 30, and 34.
Commissioners?
And I'd like to note my refusal on 14 as well.
Okay. Please note, Commissioner Blackshear is, concludes herself on, herself on item 14?
Yes.
Okay.
Was the chairman also G?
I, I reclusive myself on item 24.
Okay.
Yeah. He called that out.
Okay.
Okay, you've heard the items to be on consent, is there a motion?
Sorry, Chair.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those items for the benefit of the audience, those items have been taken care of. There will be two items heard today. Public hearing is item number one pertaining to sidewalks, item 26, which is a lot located 2401 Alameda. All the other business has been taken care of except for those two items. If you'd file out quietly, and we'll go ahead and get started, and let the commissioners get out early. And Carrie, if you're ready to go.
Sure. This is item 1 on your agenda. This is a text amendment to the sidewalk requirements in the zoning code proposed by Councilwoman Angie Henderson. Sidewalks, Nashville's had a lack of sidewalk requirements from the 1950s to the 1990s. However, there has been focus on sidewalks throughout the planning phases of various departmental plans that Nashville has undertaken, such as Nashville Next, InMotion, and Walk and Bike that highlight walking safety. The mayor also has a Green and Complete Streets executive order that puts people first to complete their trips. This is an example of some of the sidewalks that we have in Nashville because of this lack of requirements. In some areas, they're very narrow sidewalks, and they tend to have obstructions within the pedestrian travelway. Also, within the zoning code, there is no requirement for one and two-family development to participate in either sidewalk construction or contribute towards the In-Liu fund. And so you see here an example from Councilman Drive, where almost all of the units are new units along that street, or the majority of them are new units, that with an ordinance like this, they could have had sidewalks or contributed towards sidewalks, but because the, the requirement was not there, they did not. And then some examples of how we at the planning department try to coordinate pedestrian facilities to allow the pedestrian travelway to be unobscured, but still have all of the utility areas, street trees consolidated into one segment of the sidewalk. The council lady has held various community meetings and stakeholder meetings, starting in August of last year. On the Policy Subcommittee of Walk and Bike, these meetings have covered everyone from home builders to various small chamber meetings, the BPAC Committee, Alliance for Green Hills, as well as meeting with the Board of Zoning Appeals to train them on what this ordinance might look like in the future, and then also met with various Metro staff to talk about the implications for their departments. And that covered everyone from Public Works to Stormwater, Public Property Services, and then also with advocacy groups such as Walk Bike Nashville. There are current requirements in the zoning code for multifamily and non-residential development. They are triggered by new multifamily and non-residential development, or an expansion of those developments equal to 25% or greater in value or square footage. For the geographic area, you can see here on the map, you need to be within the USD, which is the orange color, or within the GSD, I'm sorry, the USD in the orange color, the GSD, and a pedestrian, a sidewalk priority index of 20 or greater, which are the pink spots that you see outside the USD. The SPI was last adopted in 2002, and so none of the metrics for sidewalk requirements have been updated in 15 years. As you all know, with Nashville Next, we adopted the Growth and Preservation Concept Map, which indicates where housing and employment growth is planned over the next 25 years and shows what area should be preserved. So this is one of the plans that the council lady tried very hard to align the sidewalk ordinance with. So here's a comparison of the Growth and Preservation Concept Map with the USD on top of it, and I'll highlight some of the areas where there are centers or transition policy, but this, the sidewalk requirements currently do not apply to developments in these areas, whereas the sidewalk priority index has some, some pink spots in those areas, but they don't align with where we've planned future growth. There's also a variety of transportation plans, both Walk and Bike and InMotion underway, as well as Plan to Play, and then the Major and Collector Street Plan that we at the planning department adopted with Nashville, updated with Nashville Next. The Major and Collector Street Plan outlines street character for all of the major and collector streets, so arterials and collectors, they're shown here on a countywide scale. And then the Major and Collector Street Plan also has standards for the development of those streets that depend on the context, which could vary anywhere from a downtown street to a rural cross-section. This is an example of one of those cross-sections, where it will show the various elements, like a bicycle zone, of course vehicular zones, but bicycle zones, parking zones, green zones, and pedestrian zones, and all of them are possible elements depending on where you're located in the Major and Collector Street Plan. Walk and Bike, also underway by Public Works, has a priority sidewalk network contained within it, and that series of green lines that you see on the screen right now is the priority sidewalk network. Those are the small segments that Metro could accomplish with appropriate amount of funding over the next five years that would create specific and necessary connections to the existing sidewalk network. Public Works' goal is to be finalized with that plan in mid-April, and then it would be presented to the Planning Commission in June in order to align with Nashville Next updates and incorporating InMotion as well. And then the intent is for the priority sidewalk network to be updated annually. I will note that there is no process for Public Works to formally adopt, there's not a board or commission that it would be presented to in order to adopt it, they would just complete the plan and begin implementation. There are two goals and actions specifically in Nashville Next that you can see here. One, under Land Use, Transportation, and Infrastructure, that's a review of Metro and State sidewalk standards and adjust design to correspond. and State sidewalk standards and adjust design to correspond with the city's adopted Major and Collector Street Plan design lines. And then also under Natural Resources and Hazard Adaptation to reexamine existing policies related to infrastructure improvements with residential infill. So as we go through the requirements for the new ordinance, this is the applicability map for the geographic areas where sidewalks would either need to be constructed, or the possibility for an in lieu contribution to be made. And so, in, on this map, you can see a variety of different geographic criteria, the urban zoning overlay, the urban services district, but what's important about this map are the streets that are highlighted. So wherever you see a street that's in the black line, that is where all development would comply with the sidewalk ordinance. But all of the blue streets that are within the USD, and then as well in the GSD, would only comply if they were non-residential or multifamily development. So there is no one or two-family requirement where you see the blue lines on the map. And again, the street standard would depend on the context and be included in the MCSP. So what you saw on that map for multifamily and non-residential development of the property is when it's within the urban services district, on a major and collector street in the MCSP, or within a Nashville Next center, within a quarter mile of the center. The triggers for that sidewalk construction would then be new development, a renovation trigger, a 50% of the assessed value of all structures on the lot, and then the same triggers for the percentage of expansion and percentage of the value of expansion at 25%. It also adds the one or two-family residential development triggers within the urban zoning overlay, so the very core of the city, on a street in the MCSP, but only those that are within the urban services district. And then the same tied to the Nashville Next centers, and within a quarter mile of the center, designed to get feeders into those centers. Sidewalks would not be required, or currently they're not required for one- and two-family teardowns or rebuilds. This would add that for new units, whenever you were adding a unit or constructing a full new unit, it would have a sidewalk requirement. It would not have a requirement for additions or renovations, though there is a provision that if adequate right-of-way is not present, that that right-of-way would need to be provided with the permit so that future sidewalk installation could be accomplished. For multifamily and non-residential, this, well, for both, it increases instances where sidewalks must be built, and it does not allow in lieu contribution in that first section that you see there on the slide. So areas where you have replacement or repair of existing sidewalk, extension of existing sidewalk for existing or proposed sidewalk, and then, when, within the UZO or on a street in the MCSP, multifamily and non-residential would be required to construct the sidewalk. They would not have the option to pay the in lieu fee. And I will say that the in lieu contribution was intended to allow the option for one- and two-family in most cases. The only times for one- and two-family where they would not have the ability to opt to do the in lieu contribution instead of sidewalk installation is when there is sidewalk present on the blockface. So an adjacent sidewalk or proposed sidewalk, or there's existing sidewalk in front of that property. Now, for the in lieu contribution, it does allow an exception for when a project by Public Works is funded and scheduled. So we are tying this also to the capital improvements budget and the capital spending plan. These are some mockups, draft mockups, that Michael Briggs, our transportation planner, did for the Walk and Bike Plan that intend to show how Public Works will be completing sidewalk improvements over the next year, with every spending plan. The idea here is that if you are on a sidewalk segment that's intended to be funded and scheduled by Public Works within that year, that you would not have to build your sidewalk, you would have the ability to pay into the in lieu contribution. It also addresses a variety of other design requirements. It requires the dedication of right-of-way regardless of whether you're actually building the sidewalk or contributing to the in lieu fund. This is also the only requirement for two-family or single-family renovation or additions. And one, the two-family, one- and two-family renovations and additions are not required to actually build the sidewalk, it's only the right-of-way. And then, in working with the Metro Departments, one of the things within that right-of-way is the grading of improvements only within the right-of-way. And so the intent there is that when a new structure is built and the driveway or sidewalk is graded to meet the public right-of-way, that within the right-of-way, it has to meet Public Works' standards so that it's not creating an issue for Public Works to come back through and install the sidewalk later. That only applies to those sidewalks that are on the priority sidewalk network, and so those sidewalks that Metro actually hopes to fund within the next five years. It does add a requirement for the Planning Commission to make recommendations to the Board of Zoning Appeals for variances. Right now, those go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we do make recommendations on some of them, but we're not required to. It also allows the Board of Zoning Appeals to talk about other ways to remedy the sidewalk improvements, such as alternative designs, or pay contribution in lieu of, in cases where they're not eligible for it, or other mitigation, as in the ordinance, and intended to respond to proposals from property owners if they have an idea about how to mitigate the lack of pedestrian improvement. It also prohibits obstruction within the pedestrian travelway. That's a provision that's similar to what was passed with the telecommunications facilities. This is also something that Public Works enforces right now, is making sure that when you have an obstruction in the right-of-way, it's either moved or designed around the obstruction in consultation with the Planning Department and a review by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And on the timing issue, it is tied to the use and occupancy permit, so code, or, I'm sorry, Public Works would inspect the improvements before code signs off on the final use of occupancy. We've also worked with the codes department and other Metro stakeholders, and committed to creating an interactive map for them, as well as for property owners or developers, so they can see easily how all of these pieces of the ordinance fit together, so they know exactly if the sidewalk is required by their development, and if they have the option of contributing to the in lieu fund. Councilwoman Henderson has also been working with both codes and Public Works on the potential impacts to staffing and departmental budgets, and so this ordinance does have an effective date of July 1st, 2017, so that they can plan with the budget. In closing, staff recommends approval of a third substitute of the ordinance.
Thank you, Carrie. I'll open the public here. One clarification on the obstruction within the sidewalks. This is on new construction that developers are putting in sidewalks. The question is, does this cover other departments within Metro, they're required to do that, i.e. National Electric Service? There's many places where they take an old pole out, put one right beside of it in a sidewalk, there's no way to get a wheelchair around, so I wonder if that's part of this bill, Council Lady. If not, that might be a consideration, because it's, it's a double-edged, it's not a double-edged sword, it's, it's a fact that it's been put on the developer to change, to move these poles, but National Electric Service doesn't seem to be following under that, so I'll just throw that out for, for talk. Open the public hearing. Anyone in wish to speak in support of this, if they would come to the microphone?
The applicant first.
Do you want to speak now, or you want to give the rebuttal?
Welcome, I mean, man.
Either way, either way you want to do it, so maybe you might want to speak at the end, and you're welcome to speak again at the end after you've heard all the comments.
I appreciate that, thank you. I'll just speak briefly to start, and then hold some time for rebuttal at the end, if I may. Again, I'm Councilwoman Angie Henderson, I'm the Councilwoman for the 34th District. I also serve on Metro Council's Budget and Finance and Public Works Committees. I chair the Parks and Libraries Committee, and I also have the privilege of representing the Metro Council on the Walk and Bike Strategic Plan Steering Committee as the Chair of the group's Policy Subcommittee. So the discussion, work, and research of our Policy Subcommittee very quickly converged on Nashville's lack of a comprehensive, effective, and productive sidewalk policy. And so a lot of our work in that committee was in looking at what policy was currently in place, as Carrie shared, and what our peer cities had by way of policy, and what we might do as a city to improve our policy as we grow, and we are moving through all these planning processes, Nashville Next, InMotion, and see if we could get a sidewalk policy that aligned with all those plans. I had already approached the Planning Department in February of last year, before the Walk and Bike Steering Committee work began, about a problem that my Green Hills Council colleague, Russ Pulley, and I were seeing in and around Green Hills, when single and two-family construction was going up within a stone's throw of an active retail center, and a stone's throw of transit, and sidewalks were not being built. We all had a lot of constituents calling us and saying, you know, "How did they get out of building sidewalks there?" And so I think what that showed was there was a misconception in the community that those builders were paying into the fee in lieu, or making a contribution in lieu of sidewalks, when in fact, as Carrie shared, single and two-family construction at present is not required to build a sidewalk or to make a contribution to the funds for walkable infrastructure. So other council colleagues had seen the same in their districts, and 21 of them have signed on as cosponsors of this bill. Our constituents want and need to be able to safely walk where they need to go, and I believe that the ability to safely walk where you need to go is a fundamental civic right. Our zoning and land use patterns in the second half of the last century, and in this century, continue to relegate the majority of Nashville citizens to either walking along dangerous roads and standing in ditches, or to taking their cars to destinations that are just a quarter or half mile away, contributing to our traffic and congestion woes. Bill 493 intentionally and strategically aligns with Nashville Next and the city's multimodal transportation needs and goals, as reflected in InMotion. It is extremely short-sighted and backward even that a city of our size does not have a more comprehensive sidewalk policy. It is also short-sighted that a city of our size has zero walkable infrastructure requirements for single and two-family construction. We are not requiring sidewalks everywhere, or we are not requiring sidewalks to nowhere through this bill, far from it. We propose to require sidewalks in strategic areas, lost my screen there, in strategic areas based on the framework of the general plan and the MCSP. So the Nashville Next plan, its identification of centers, the Major and Collector Street Plan, are really the architecture on which this bill is built. Further, with a few common sense exceptions, such as an adjacent sidewalk, an existing sidewalk on the same blockface, or an adjacent, existing, or repair of an existing sidewalk, thank you. With those common sense exceptions, single and two-family builders have the option to contribute to their pedestrian benefit zone via the fee in lieu of sidewalk construction. I would share with you that, you know, fine-tuning of particular technical aspects of this bill are always ongoing, you know, as it is with any bill of this complexity, and so we will hopefully, you know, still have time coming up to our public hearing, and between second and third, I'm open to continuing to take suggestions and listening to our stakeholders, and amending, you know, as needed, and taking feedback there, and to continue to work on the bill. So I guess, with that said, I will wait to speak and follow up our rebuttal, so thank you.
I'll devote you some rebuttal time, if you like, after, after we've heard you. Is open to public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in support, if you come to the microphone, give us your name, you'll be allowed in two minutes.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Nora Kern. I am the Executive Director of Walk Bike Nashville, a nonprofit here, and Walk Bike Nashville is dedicated to creating and inspiring a more walkable city, because we understand, like most residents do, that sidewalks are essential to having a city that has thriving businesses, healthy citizens, and an effective transportation system. Historically, both in Nashville and across the country, sidewalks have largely been built, both by developers and by the city. And when the policies were changed in Nashville in the 1950s, we began to fall very quickly behind. Today, Nashville is missing over 1,900 miles of sidewalks. Only 37% of our streets have pedestrian accommodations, and for reference, the Walk and Bike Plan is that the priority list is only 63 miles. So clearly, Metro cannot just do this alone. We strongly believe that 493 is a balanced bill, drawn directly from the principles of Nashville Next. If anything, we would want it to see, see it be even stronger and require more sidewalks. Councilwoman and Metro staff has provided a clear map of applicability, and has made every effort to address the concerns of the building community and pay attention to the details of implementation. With an effective date of July 1st, there is ample time to ensure that the businesses and builders stay informed of changes, but we would like to emphasize that time is of the essence. Every day, our city is adding to the missing miles of sidewalks. So finally, I'd like to acknowledge the many community members who are here in support, they could all raise their hands. Clearly, this is an issue that we all care about, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name's Jason Garrett, 1508 Superior Court. Dear Planning Commissioners, we're continuing to see anecdotes of how the IT City has gaps in fomenting healthy neighborhoods, and Nashville's largest development boom could have favored us had we had this bill five years ago. Developer investor decisions in a housing shortage will be driven by the ability to maximize short-sighted profits. This is one of the several gaps thoughtful legislators are recognizing and addressing. The tree canopy and short-term rentals are two others. Homes are not hotels, holds relevant in many contexts. In 2015, I supported an SP here at a public hearing that was breaking conformity rules. SPs, of course, trigger sidewalk construction. This SP was disapproved. The developer recognized the importance and value of the sidewalks, mentioning it as a bargaining chip, but later, when forced to build by right, they've not been built. Another case, someone buying a rental property next door, subdividing the land, which should have triggered sidewalk construction per the 2014 subdivision rules, what was done. A likely in lieu fee because the timing isn't right, which likely wasn't even collected. So how much would these have cost? As little as $10 a lineal foot with construction, equipment, and labor already on hand. How much will it cost Metro later? Over $600 a foot. When will they come? No one knows. We have no sidewalks in our district, very few that have made the priority recommendation from the Walk and Bike Plan. So surely, these are just two of thousands of stories, it's just a balance sheet line item, so people continue to jump in their car for the most simple of tasks, even to exercise. And it may be a wise decision, Tennessee state law does not allow a pedestrian to impede the flow of traffic, and cars will not be at fault when that crash occurs. We're the IT City, and we should set the terms to favor our residents. I'd echo Councilmember Rosenberg and Roberts' feelings from last week's BZA hearing, where another developer was pleading for a hardship case. It's lazy, someone else will come along and build, and with your support, hopefully under 493's new constraints that address long-term neighbors' needs, and if only we'd had this five years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
I will use my time during, during this period, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, but my name is Brett Withers, I'm the Metro Council Representative for District 6. If you were to look at your map that is on the screen, you will see that the western portion of District 6, closer to downtown, is inside the UZO and has more of the black lines. The eastern portion of my district, the district that I represent, the Rosebank Community in particular, is in the blue line area, and is also experiencing a lot of infill development these days, more than, more than had been recently. But one thing I did want to point out is that District 6, in fact, does include, and is really known for, sort of our neighborhood commercial corners, in some cases that are legacy zoning that's existed for decades, but nevertheless, District 6 does have a few of these neighborhood centers that are carried over into Nashville Next. And in some cases, those neighborhood centers are presently unbuilt or sort of underutilized, but our neighbors are looking forward to those being built within the small neighborhood center areas within Nashville Next, and in fact, within zoning, present zoning entitlements in many cases. But one of the things that will, that makes it a hindrance to, to have those built into the community in a way that people can walk to them, is sometimes that there also are no sidewalks that are really adjacent to those centers. So a lot of these efforts to find ways to sort of fill in some of those gaps, I think, are strongly needed to help finish a lot of that work that's been begun in making District 6 and some of our other urban districts very, very walkable communities, which otherwise they are. I also wanted to touch really quickly on SPs. We've had a couple of SPs that have been approved in District 6 and in some other areas in past council terms, for which a condition of approval from the community was actually the construction of off-site sidewalks to access that center, either sidewalks or other improvements. And what we have found, unfortunately, is that, either because of And what we have found unfortunately is that either because of the way they were written or because of phasing requirements, that means that those will be installed on the 12th of never, that actually getting to the point of having those things that the community wanted as a condition of approval, actually having those installed will be waiting quite a long time. So again, I applaud Councilmember Henderson for tackling some of those ways to fill in some of those gaps, perhaps a little bit more quickly. For the priority sidewalk list, Mr. Garrett, who's one of my constituents, pointed out that the priority sidewalk list is actually a very, very short list, and the only priority sidewalk in the Walk and Bike Plan for all of District 6 is in fact, a half a block on 12th Street in the Lockland Springs area. So, you know, there are other areas of the county that are really primed to get new sidewalks that I think arguably need it more than we do, but some of the gaps that we have in our areas that are seeing the most infill development are still being left behind. And I think this finds a way to shift that focus away from public dollars and back toward private dollars as the private investment happens, and I think that that is appropriate. Mr. Garrett is also a resident of the Shelby Hills neighborhood, and in that area, we do have a lot of sort of half blocks where, for whatever reason, a sidewalk was constructed, particularly on a corner lot. And our numbered streets are really good ways for people to get across the neighborhood. Sometimes you have a sidewalk on one of those lots but not the other. And so you can see that there are plenty of opportunities there in Shelby Hills where having a development pay for, to install that sidewalk, or at least make it shrink the size of the in lieu fee area would help to fill in some of those gaps more quickly again. So I will close with those comments, but just say I really applaud Councilmember Henderson for all of her work with all of the stakeholders and for all of you in working with us to find a solution that, so that as we get new houses infilling in our neighborhoods, we also get new sidewalks that benefit the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Hi, my name is Fuller Hannan. I'm with the Nashville Civic Design Center. And last year, as I'm sure you are all aware, we published the book, Shaping the Healthy Community: The Nashville Plan. And in this book, we outline strategies tailored to each transect zone that focus on six built environment factors that impact health. They are neighborhood design and development, walkability, pedestrian safety, transportation, housing, and open space in parks. This bill directly addresses three of these factors while also touches the other three as a byproduct of design and thus increasing quality of life. So we are very much in support of this bill, and I hope you all are as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, we're going to take a short break. If you'd just bear with us.
And this planning department, led by this commission, has made that possible over the course of now an historic, more than 16 years of service. So for that, you have the thanks of the mayor who sent you, and now you have an opportunity to hear from the mayor who knows so well the results of those 16 years, our mayor, Megan Berry.
So it's my pleasure to stand before you. I noticed that the counter isn't actually counting down. Thank you. Want to take a quick moment before I recognize and laud you all, also just to recognize the council members who are with us. The council members bring so much to the community. We have Berkeley Allen, who serves on this commission, but we also have here in the audience Brett Withers, Angie Henderson, Scott Davis was outside. All of them come before you all the time and rely on your good judgment and rely on your steadfast commitment to making sure that Nashville is a great place when they bring different projects to you. And to that end, we have had the pleasure of having Jim and Stuart serve on this commission for 16 years. Stuart was my councilman for many, many years prior to that, and I've had the great honor to be able to vote for both of you to continue your service as a council member when I was on the council. And the fact that you were willing to give up so much time and energy to make this community so great is laudable. And the fact that you want to stop makes me very sad. But I think that when we look at the makeup of how this commission has evolved and changed over the year, the years we've had, somebody who has had deep ties to the development community and deep ties to the neighborhood community, both of those have to have a voice on this commission, and both of those have to be represented, and you have both done that so well. It is with great pleasure that we get to present you a little token of our appreciation today. I, you know, Doug arranged this, so I'm going to let Doug come up and also say a few words. And I just want to say, because Mayor Purcell is standing here, the reason that we are in this place right now is because we have had the wonderful component of mayors who have laid foundations and groundwork that started with his predecessor, and then with him, and then with Carl. And now I get to inherit all of the great work that they have done, and it sure makes my job a whole lot easier. So I get to say to you as well, Mayor Purcell, thank you for all you've done to make everything possible. So we have a token.
Yes, Stuart. Jim, do you want to come up?
There will be photos, so come on.
Well, we were able to get all three mayors to sign these prints for you, thanking you for your time here on the commission. This is Jim.
Here, come this way.
Do what the mayor says.
Come on. Do what the mayor says.
Yes. We'll flank you.
Come together. All right. Okay.
That's the first gift you could legally receive.
There's no pension. No, there is no pension. Can we have a picture with all of the planning commissioners? And the staff? Because that way we can get a -- yeah, that way you guys can all have a picture to, a memento. Staff two, y'all. Come on. Get them all up. All the staff, all you. Come in. And we'll put you guys in the front, and we'll have the staff in the back. Mayor. Councilman. Tell people behind. Somebody hold on to him.
I can almost --
Somebody hold on to him.
I can't.
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 Okay, is everybody ready? Where's our council?
All the commissioners.
Okay, we'll resume, and I believe we were ready for people that were in opposition. See if they come to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Carlet. I'm an employee of the Nashville Area Chamber of Commerce at 211 Commerce Street, and I am here to request deferral and then take the razzing due to me as a longtime proponent of sidewalks. If we could do that after my two minutes, that would be preferable. I do want to start by stating that the chamber is supportive of adding to our sidewalk network. We have in our metro legislative agenda a commitment to multimodal transportation and transportation solutions for the region, and we see sidewalks as a key component of that. But we also are committed to having legislation that is clear and fair to our member businesses. Sent a letter to you all today outlining some requested changes to the bill, which we've offered to the council member for her consideration. We're requesting deferral, though, because our members, small businesses, property owners, developers, are missing some information that they need to be able to make an informed decision on the bill. I think part of this is because the council member has an approach that I think needs to be commended to this policymaking. She has started from the vision that was outlined in Nashville Next and has tied in the strategic plan of walk and bike. She's talking about a bill that shows how the private sector can help with implementation. She's thinking through how the public sector helps with implementation through capital and operating and technology. But as a result, there are many moving parts here, and this comes back to us needing more information. Information on the in lieu fee, information on the interactive maps, so we can understand when the triggers apply, needing to have walk and bike approved so we can know what the priority network will finally be, and needing research on how the provisions of this bill could impact small businesses that are seeking a renovation and now might need to build a sidewalk. Again, I see us being able to come to a conclusion here that's beneficial, but we need some more information to help our decision-making and clear up some misunderstanding. Respectfully request that you defer the bill. Thank you.
My name is John Brittle. I reside at 1406 Fifth Avenue North. Commissioner, Mr. Chair, it's been an honor being before you for many, many years. I would like to, for one of y'all to suggest we have a change so that there's an additional -- it's not for or against, but I'm really looking for a modification of this bill because as a residential realtor in Nashville, Tennessee, we live for sidewalks. We're embarrassed when people come here from out of town and want to know why we don't have sidewalks. I fully support the sidewalk bill and 110% support the in lieu fee. I'm not very happy as a taxpayer in Davidson County that we don't know what the in lieu fee is going to be and that it's supposed to change every year and hasn't changed for three. And I have one client who's contributed over $30,000 to the in lieu fee in the last three years, and I haven't seen that sidewalk yet. I don't think we need 10 years to give the money back. I don't think we need any years to give the money back. I would like somebody to hold Public Works accountable for where that money goes. We are looking for sidewalk construction. I would submit to you as a realtor who spends all of his days on the street, and I mean all of my day, I don't sit at a desk. The council lady would tell you that I requested she come meet me on Castleman Drive last year, where I said to her, we need the single-family and duplex construction builders in Nashville to contribute to the in lieu fee. We absolutely do. We don't need them building sidewalks, ladies and gentlemen. They don't know how to do it. They're going to say they do, but to what Commissioner McLean said, I've got a light pole that we've been trying to have removed since six months ago after that house closed, and it's still not gone. I believe we will stop the closing of the new construction houses in Davidson County if we don't sort out how to do it before, after we get our use and occupancy permit. And we will, in fact, build a bunch of sidewalks to nowhere because we've done it over the last 20 years. Thank you, and kudos to the staff because the staff has worked really hard, and we're on our third substitute in about 45 days, and we could fix this with a couple more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Sean Henry, representing the Home Builders Association of Middle Tennessee, and I think under your rules, I get a little more time to speak representing that group. It's better than 100.
I'll give you five minutes.
Thank you, sir. So 315 Dedrick Street, I represent the Home Builders Association of Middle Tennessee. The concern that they have, and they've enumerated that concern in a letter to you, Mr. Chairman, there's really six points that they've laid out in their letter, and I want to touch on those, but they support the construction of sidewalks. Everyone wants to see sidewalks constructed that you can walk on from point A to point B without having to step off the sidewalk, walk across someone's grass yard, hopefully get back on the sidewalk, dodge a ditch, hop a water puddle, and get to the corner. That seems to be the primary burning point here in the legislation. We need a consistent sidewalk pattern. The developers and builders prefer the ability to pay in lieu of so that Public Works construct sidewalks that are comprehensive, that are contiguous, that don't have disconnected sections. And all you have to do is take a look at the Granny White Pike sidewalk project that was done last year in Green Hills, or the Lebanon Pike sidewalk project that's underway right now, and you can see how well our city does when they get behind the construction of sidewalks. So piecemeal and incremental construction of sidewalks is not going to help our city. And 50 feet at a time on infill development sites, because 50 feet is generally the width of a side, width of a lot, 50 feet at a time is not going to get us the miles and miles of sidewalks that we need to have constructed. I've taken a couple of the comments that you all have received just in the past couple of days, actually, the group of comments that you received between March 16 and March 22, and I've just taken a sample of those three, okay? And just to be fair, I took the first one, and there was 31 comments during that period. I took the first one, I took the middle one, comment number 16, I took the third, the last one, which is comment number 31. And don't be offended, Councilman, there are two of these are in your district, it appears. Comment number one is the address of 5303 Kentucky Avenue. These are all people in support of this bill. I just want to point out a couple of examples here. There's no sidewalk, there's no existing sidewalk along that stretch of Kentucky Avenue. So when you come through the flow chart that the staff did very well at preparing, there's a matrix you come through to determine whether you can build a sidewalk, pay for one in lieu of, et cetera. This particular property qualifies for payment in lieu of construction, but it's also a horizontal property regime. And so if they trigger the trigger, if they trigger the requirement to pay in lieu of, the question becomes, are they paying for the 50 feet that covers both of those dup -- this is a duplex lot. Are they paying for the full 50 feet for both homes or only one of those? How is that apportioned? Secondly, 1807 Fodlin Street. Fodlin Street is, has perfectly fine sidewalks today, I believe, on both sides of the street. They've been there for decades. So there's an existing sidewalk, but it's not up to standard. There's no grass strip separating the sidewalk from the street curb. So they are required to rip out that sidewalk. They have a small retaining wall behind them. They've got to rip that out, they've got to replace that, and they likely are going to have to dedicate land, either in lieu of construction or as part of that construction activity. So it's more expensive for them to build that sidewalk than to pay in lieu of, and they're being penalized because they have a sidewalk in front of their house. The third example is 1508 Sevier Court. This is also in East Nashville, just happens to be that. It's a cul-de-sac, it qualifies for in lieu of. And if so, if they remodel their house and trip that 25% valuation, that's a $17,000 job. You can't renovate a kitchen for $17,000. So if they trip that, $17,000 for them based on their assessed value, they've got to pay a $3,500 fee into the sidewalk program. That's 20% of their kitchen budget of $17,000. So we think that 25% trigger is a little out of whack and is a little onerous, particularly at one property at a time, one remodel job at a time. Now, there's other people that have commented here in the last 24 hours, someone from Graybar Lane, someone from Creve Road, neither of those properties are required to have a sidewalk. It's easy to support something if you're not required to pay for it. There's a property on Elvira Street in Inglewood, but for the fact that that property is within a couple hundred feet of Gallatin Pike, they wouldn't have to do a sidewalk, but they're close to Gallatin Pike, and so they have to build a sidewalk. So my time is out, but I would like to just point out the six points of concern. We think a deferral makes good sense. There's questions. Everyone who's supported this bill should apply the criteria to their own situation and learn whether or not they can be expected to build a sidewalk someday or pay in lieu of. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sean Bales. I live at 3716 Weston Avenue. I'm owner of FMBC Investments and Capital City Construction. I've been before you many of times. I am an investor, developer, and builder. As many of you know, I'm passionate about inner-city growth. And let me preface the speech first by saying I am a sidewalk advocate. I think a lot of people know where I develop their sidewalks. We put in new ones. So I applaud Councilwoman Henderson for her both enthusiasm and her desire to tackle such a huge problem that we have. I want to back up just in regards to that. It is a huge problem. We don't need to rush into it. If I come before you as a developer and I want to change the entitlement of a property, I have to go through many, many steps, meeting with the councilperson, community meeting, all of those things. I get that. There's negotiating back and forth. But what this bill is proposing is changing the base right of a lot of property owners within this city. I don't think that a lot of people realize that. And for lack of a better term, the whispers have been, "Hey, have you heard about the sidewalk tax? Have you heard about the Simpax sidewalk tax? What does that mean for me as a property owner? I'm not a developer, but I'm hearing $5,000 to $10,000 to $20,000 tax that I'm going to get if I ever develop my property." I don't believe that the average taxpayer understands what this bill is. I do this for a living. I know Mr. Henry charges an exorbitant amount of money per hour, and he doesn't understand. So I would just ask, maybe in your last act as a commissioner, for the two that have served for 16 years, if you could just defer it to help us all understand things, and then we can come to a solution as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, if you'd like to, give me a couple of minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Mr. Brittle and the gentleman, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Sean Bales.
And Sean Bales. We're at all our developer stakeholder meetings and have been engaged in this process since November, as we move through the work of this bill. And so, you know, to say at the end of this process that there is a fair amount of confusion, I think is somewhat disingenuous. I think I'm going to respond to the chamber's comments just directly as to those things that they think we need deferral for. The proposed fee in lieu, I have met with the administration, we've looked at the preliminary analysis from Public Works, and Director Lodmax O'Neil has committed to have us that fee before the public hearing, if you were to choose to approve the bill today. So that bill will have a public hearing, it will have a third reading, and we will know that fee just shortly. So it's not necessary to defer here to find out about that fee. That is in progress and coming very shortly. As to the question of where do sidewalks exist today, you know, I would say, you know, Google Satellite View, drive around, look and see where those sidewalks are. There was a map or a tool mentioned here that is in progress, but the purpose of that map or tool is not for this bill, but rather to have online as a tool for future use. So that's not really a legitimate reason to defer or to slow this down. Regarding the Priority Sidewalk Network, it is online in draft form now. It is only 66 miles of sidewalk, and the Priority Sidewalk Network will be finalized, as Carrie Logan shared, in April. So that's coming up shortly. And, you know, the Priority Sidewalk Network is not going to be adopted in a typical sense. It will be a, you know, a living document adjusted annually through a transparent process. And, you know, in the past, we have adopted plans and we've put them on the shelf, but I have never been more encouraged in my 15 years of walkable community advocacy of how our departments are now working together, Public Works, planning the capital improvements budget process, the planning for these sidewalks, how all these plans are aligning. So as it relates to the fee and what Mr. Brittle mentioned about paying into that, at present, that fund, and I have seen it all documented, it all goes appropriate, received, and accordingly directed to projects. That fund has garnered in the last decade just $1 million, because there are very few circumstances within which it is even an option to pay into it. So it is just now, you know, your multifamily and your larger developments that are paying into that fund in lieu of sidewalks. And so as it relates to the kind of sidewalk-to-nowhere ruse, this bill, again, is very intentional as it relates to single- and two-family building. As, you know, there is a very intentional and strategic geography that aligns with Nashville Next, so we are not asking for sidewalks everywhere and sidewalks in neighborhoods, far from it. Councilman Davis earlier said, you know, every neighborhood wants a sidewalk. I tell my constituents, you're not getting a sidewalk internal to your neighborhood. It's not going to happen. We're going to traffic calm in those neighborhoods. We're going to have those be streets where you can safely walk and bike, but where the barriers are in our community is when folks get to the edge of their neighborhood, to those major and collector streets. Those are the barriers at which people cannot then walk to the store. Their kids can't bike to the adjacent neighborhood to their friend's house. You can't walk and visit other folks and get to your nearby school or a park. So very strategically, we're looking at the requirements on those majors and collectors. And if there's not an existing sidewalk, if there's not an adjacent sidewalk that can be extended, or a sidewalk on that block face, then you can pay the fee in lieu. And to Mr. Brittle's point, you know, we hope you will. We've got to kind of work together as a city and the builder community. We have, let's see, with 66 miles in that Priority Sidewalk Network, at the current funding level of $30 million per year, it would take 14 years for the city to build out the priority network of 66 miles of sidewalk. And we are 1,900 miles behind, right? So if we are going to be strategic about where we are going to make our requirements and align those with our National Next and in motion goals. To Mr. Henry's assertion that the reason that people are kind of, 61 people sent you emails in support of this bill, and I don't think it is because they think, "I'm going to get a sidewalk in front of my house," or "I want a sidewalk in front of my house," or "I don't want a sidewalk." It is just generally that they are supportive of a more strategic and intentional policy around sidewalk requirements. And Mr. Henry as well mentioned something that is false. Never was a home renovation going to trigger you to build a sidewalk. That's not accurate. It is at a 25% of, if your renovation or addition is at 25% of the assessed value of all the structures on your lot, that will trigger a dedication of easement for future sidewalks if, again, you are within the intentional and strategic geography that we have set up. The 25% trigger, there may have been a misunderstanding that was related to multifamily and non-residential development, and so it may have been that folks got those conflated in their mind. But this bill also, while the biggest change is for multifamily and single, or rather in two-family, it also adjusts the triggers for multifamily and commercial, again, because of two notable examples that we had seen in Green Hills, where developers tore down, effectively, a whole entire structure, took out the inside, took off the roof, and propped up the walls so as not to trigger the new standards of the major and collector street plan, the sidewalks and other things. And so it was kind of constructed in sort of a reverse way. If you don't meet this, you know, and so that we have looked at strategically to improve that, and that was where we were talking about triggers related to renovation. So that was for multifamily and non-residential, not for folks who are just renovating their home. That does not make sense. And again, we don't want sidewalks to nowhere, and I think we've been very strategic in this bill to make sure that we don't get those sidewalks to nowhere. I'm going to see if there's anything else to rebut. I think, apologize, when your iPhone goes into sleep mode, sorry about that. It's never good technology. Let's see. Other items that were asked for in our stakeholder meetings, we have responded to those. As it relates to staffing, I think Ms. Logan spoke to that, with an effective date of July 1, we have been very intentional about meeting with Public Works and codes as to implementation, the GIS layer that will be provided to them for implementation internal to Development Services, what the staffing implications are for Public Works, and their budget requests this year reflect that. And as it relates to concerns about small businesses, you know, we too share those concerns, and we have expressed those since the beginning of this process and invited those folks to engage with us at stakeholder meetings. And so we, you know, welcome additional feedback on that as we move ahead with this bill. And so if there are any particular concerns that were mentioned by way of these two letters, I guess, of opposition or folks speaking in opposition, I'm happy to respond to any of those, particularly if you want to inquire, but I think that responds to most of it there. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing closed. Stuart, I'll start with you on this one, and I'll call on you last on the next one, and then you can have the last word for the day.
Well, I'm a person of very few words. But I do have a couple of thoughts about this one. We have a much more sophisticated planning process and council process than when I first became aware of both of them many years ago. And we continue to provide more detailed planning and thought before passing ordinances, and that's a good thing. I am a believer in the council system, having served for 12 years there. I just like to go to meetings, you know, and so I've been to a lot of meetings over the years. But we have a better council now than we used to, a more thoughtful council with more staff and better results. And same could be said of this commission, I think. We've continued to progress. But there's nothing quite like the clarifying focus of a council bill to get people to the table to figure out exactly what's important and what isn't. And I think some very well-spoken words have been used by good folks to seek a deferral, but I'm ready sort of for the clarifying focus of the legislative body to take this work, which we all kind of agree with, focus off, with the basic thrust off, and put the fine tuning to it. So I intend to vote for this bill today. Thank you.
That was a lot shorter than I was expecting. Yeah, well, I agree with everything you said. One, I would like to say that Council Lady's rebuttal was pretty great. I mean, she hit all the high points. I feel like most of the questions that I had, she hit in her rebuttal. I think from a planning perspective, which is obviously our role here, I think it absolutely makes sense. I understand that there are still some concerns from others, and so as the council lady stated, there's time for that at the council level, and that can be accomplished then. So I am fully ready to support this bill as well.
Brenda?
Thank you. I agree with everything that's been said so far. All the questions I had have been answered. And I think the concerns that we have right now are things that are details. As far as the concept and the bill before us, I feel that I'm ready to support it. It touches on every planning goal that we've set up, you know, set up for Nashville Next, and I think that showing the list of meetings that have taken place was a great thing for us to see, to see how much the community has been involved and the input that has been given by all of Nashvilleans, including developers and business owners. And I think we're, everyone's never going to know everything right now because we're still moving forward. We're still going to get to the point where we can get those details and fine-tune all those things. So as of now, I think that it has the great foundation for a good bill, and it gets, it achieves a lot of the goals, like I said, that Nashville Next is trying to achieve. So for that reason, I'm willing to support this bill as well.
Council Lady?
Thank you. I'd echo all those things, and just, you know, just to say the fact that the bill was first introduced in December and then deferred in January and February, there's certainly been a lot of opportunities to stop and input, take more input. And, you know, the fact that we're on the third substitute is indicative. I think of all the back and forth that has happened once we've created that clarifying legislation. So I agree with the commissioner, who we're losing, that, you know, getting it filed gets the conversation going, and then great things happen. And I commend the council member on all the hard work she's put in this and the very effective rebuttal. Couple of questions, just to maybe clear some questions up about the in lieu fee. What does the code currently say about how the in lieu fee is to be calculated?
It's an average of Public Works projects to be calculated annually.
Annually, so it's already in the code to be calculated on an annual basis? That's not anything new that we're introducing here?
That is not new. We did actually, though, insert by July 1 of each year, so that it's tied to the budget process.
Okay, so we've got to make it a little more specific, which I think is very good. And then can you also address if someone chose to build a sidewalk in front of a residential home as opposed to paying the in lieu fee, how do they deal with the stormwater piece of it?
They would have to submit plans through Public Works and stormwater if necessary. And so that's why having the in lieu fee option for one and two-family is so important.
Do you, I mean, can you help me think through scenarios where, I mean, we're not going to ask people to install stormwater lines in front of their house or something. I mean, how would that work on a typical street, do you think?
If they chose to build it on the street, like with a ditch cross-section, for example, they would have to fill in the ditch. We're also working with them, Public Works, on alternative sidewalk standards. The idea being that maybe you could install a sidewalk behind the ditch, and as that sidewalk network develops, it would be accessible at different points along the street. So there are a couple of options, but I think where you have a ditch cross-section, it is the in lieu fee that becomes important.
Okay, or then perhaps of the alternative standard. So we're keeping that alternative standard possibility?
Yes, there is, yes. It requires going to the BZA, but it does, it's planning and Public Works working together, making a recommendation to the BZA.
Okay, so we're not expecting the BZA to have the expertise to know whether that's a good, okay, I think that's good. That was one of my other questions. And then, let's see, finally, do we have any information on, I mean, how many sidewalks have been built with money from the pedestrian benefit payments? Or can you at least explain about the pedestrian benefit zones and how the money gets allocated and where it shows up again?
Right now, there are 11 pedestrian benefit zones. One of the things we heard throughout this process is that people had, developers as well as neighborhoods, had a desire to ensure that the in lieu contributions were kept a little bit closer to where the development was happening. And so one of the things that this bill does do is increases the number of pedestrian benefit zones from 11 to 16, basically creates an inner ring around the core so that each of those areas has their own pedestrian benefit zone. My understanding is that the money is taken in by Public Works for either through the zoning code, and there are a few infill subdivisions that pay into that fund as well, and then they allocate that toward, I believe, mostly repair projects because of the very little amount that is.
Okay, so it goes mostly for repair. But it's, I mean, the metro budget documents that show where the But it's, it's, I mean, the Metro budget documents that show where the capital improvement money goes, shows for every year how much money's come in for sidewalks and that it has gone out and been allocated somewhere.
Yes, Public Works keeps track of all that.
Public Records has that. So I feel like that answers a couple of the questions that have been raised. And then finally, you know, I continue to hear about how far behind we are of other cities. How do other cities accomplish this? I assume that they have requirements that you build sidewalks when you build things. Is that, can you?
Yes, that's one of the ways. I mean, the two main ways are through development or through capital improvements projects.
Okay, so it's not unprecedented to do this. Great. I have no further questions. I think it's, I mean, it's complicated, does have a lot of moving parts, and we may yet have some more work to do, but I feel like we've got, we've got time to do that, and there's certainly opportunity on both second and third reading for amendments. So I applaud the council member and offer my support.
Brian?
I echo the commending the Council Lady. That was a great presentation and a great rebuttal, really hit on all the points. The question I had, you know, you covered it well, and I really appreciate all, you can tell all the hard work she put into it from her presentation to the rebuttal, which makes our job so much easier. And so I was planning to support it before, and I just gave more confirmation during, during your presentation. I really appreciate it. And also, my, our fellow Commissioner, Councilman Allen, just for asking the questions I didn't think about too. So this is, I definitely plan to support this bill and look forward to it.
Jeff?
As a developer who spent the past decade working on pedestrian-friendly projects, this is critical. This is critical for our traffic issues. This is critical for the development for the city. So I've got one quick question for staff relative to the obstructions, because I have spent more time and money with NES, AT&amp;T, and Public Works. Who pays for all that relative to removing the obstructions?
Right. So I do want to say that there are a couple of different options. One is removing and relocating the obstruction, and that would be the developer that pays for that. However, what we are encouraging people to do is come to talk to us about alternative designs and work through that process at the BZA level so that if appropriate, we can make adjustments to the dimensions of the required grass strip, front and zone, and pedestrian travel way so that that's less of a problem.
And let's assume NES, AT&amp;T, Public Works are within their easements. I assume that governs. What happens if they're with, not within their easements?
This bill, most, the vast majority of this bill would address public right-of-way only. And so if they had a private easement on a parcel, then that would be an issue between them and the developer.
Well, let's assume they don't have an easement, which has happened before.
Then the question would be legally, how are they on that, at that location on the property?
It's happened to me several times with AT&amp;T specifically, so.
You could probably hire Sean to have them removed from the property.
Council Lady, as you take this through council, and this is going to be a significant burden for the individuals, for the developers, to work with all these other agencies, because it's not cheap, it's not easy, it's very time-consuming. So contemplate the removal of the obstructions as you take this through the process.
Chairman?
Real quick, I appreciate all the questions and the hard work from, from the council. It's a big bill to take on, so I know how much work goes into it. Thank you very much for doing that. I had a question about the BZA. Is there an additional fee to go in front of the BZA or is, I was just wondering, since it's requiring, or is it free?
It's a variance, right? So is there a fee? I'm sorry, I'm not familiar, is there a fee to have an application for variance for the BZA?
I believe they used to be 1/10th, 1% of the total development cost. I don't know if that's still the fee, but I think it is.
And that's only if they're requesting a variance from the standard. So if they are complying with the sidewalk standards, there's no need to go to the BZA.
Well, I understand that, but what if there's a gas line or something, and then do you have to go in front of the BZA apparently? I mean, I just want to know if, you know, the fee, it'd be a fee increase, I mean, it'd be.
There are sidewalk, sidewalk variance is going to the BZA now. And so that's a process that they're already doing, they're already reviewing, and then we are weighing in on them sort of voluntarily. And then this bill would ask us to more, work more proactively with the developers on the front end on the alternative design standards and require us to make those recommendations to the BZA.
Well, and, yeah, okay, that's good. I mean, I just, we have to be careful because there's so many utilities and drainage, stormwater, you name it. And I know some things will probably come up, but that was one question I had. And then the chamber asked the question, I think it's the last three items, item number three, to clarify the dedication of right-of-way by single and two-family properties, developers will not count against the lot size for purpose of meeting minimum lot size. Is that true or not true?
That, right now, there's a provision in the code that if you are subdividing property and you're dedicating right-of-way, that that doesn't count against your lot size. So there's a possibility to remove that provision that only limits it to subdivisions. However, it can't be done under the caption of this bill because of the way it's structured.
Well, that might be something, Council Lady, that we can address, because I don't think that would be fair. The one question I had is where, where did we come up with the 25%? Is that like a standard from a peer city or is that, would, did we just pull that? Council Lady, that would probably be a question from you, I guess, or?
I was going to add, which 25? So for.
For a remodel.
On single family and two-family?
Yes.
It was intended to allow for some repairs and renovations, but once you're investing at a more significant level, and again, it doesn't require the installation of the sidewalk or the contribution in lieu of the installation, the only thing that that requires is if the right-of-way on your street is insufficient, that you would need to dedicate the two or three feet of right-of-way to allow Public Works to put in a sidewalk in the future.
Okay. And then on the 25%, does that include like any improvement landscaping, pools, porches?
Permit, so whatever you needed to get a permit for.
Whatever you need to get a permit for, which swimming pool requires a permit.
Swimming pool.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you very much. I, I really appreciate, sidewalks are a big issue, and I've, I'm a big advocate. I want to make sure that we know what we're voting on, and so I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for your comments, and I'm going to entertain a motion if there's someone like to.
We've got a second.
Got a motion and a second to approve with all staff recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We've got one item left, item 26, which is a lot on Alameda.
That was reported.
You can.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ready for item number 26?
Item 26 on this evening's agenda is a request to rezone property from RS5 zoning to R6A zoning. The property is located at 2401 Alameda Street in North Nashville. It is outlined in red at the intersection of Alameda Street and 24th Avenue North. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The existing zoning on this property is RS5, which is intended for single-family dwellings with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The requested zoning is R6A, which is intended for one- and two-family dwellings with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, and includes design standards intended to create walkable neighborhoods. The land use policy on this property is T4 urban neighborhood evolving, which is intended to create and enhance neighborhoods with more housing choices and improved connectivity. This area contains a mix of one- and two-family dwellings today. The subject property is located on a corner and has access via an alley, which makes this an appropriate location to increase housing choice in this neighborhood, which is consistent with the goals of the policy. Therefore, staff's recommendation is to approve.
Thank you. Item is open. Public hearing, applicant be allowed 10 minutes. This applicant here. Okay, is anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
No.
Okay. Reason to speak in opposition, to cover the microphone, give us your name and address, and you'll be allowed 10, two minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kenneth Bakary. I'm the owner at 2403 Alameda. The subject property is on the corner, it's 2401 Alameda. After looking at all the houses in my area, most of the houses were built before in 1970 on that block. And for someone to come in and increase the size of what a, the size of what a house would be on that lot from 5,000, 6,000, that would just throw out of whack the flavor and the look of the whole area. Also, the way that, the narrowness of the lot, I think it's 30 feet across by 150 back, I'm not sure that a duplex would look appropriate at that location on that corner. So that on top of the fact that duplex would really squeeze into my living quarters at 2403 Alameda, so I'm completely against this. There's just no way around it. It would just throw out the flavor of the neighborhood, because most of the houses there are built before 1970. That's all I would really have to say on it. Oh, the other thing is the driveway. The house that was there, that burned down years ago at 2401, my house and that house that burned down share the driveway at Alameda. So putting a duplex there, I don't, or a double-family wide house there, we'd just throw that out. We'd throw that out, the whole idea of sharing a driveway. There'd be no way, there'd be no room. And that's all I'd have to say. I'm completely against it.
Thank you. And I make this comment, I see there's an alley, and chances are that there is duplex built there that they would, would probably come in off the alley, so shouldn't, shouldn't be a problem on the existing driveway. Don't know that that would be the case, but generally where there's an alley and they're rebuilding, they do try to come in off the alley because it just makes it better for the parking, so that may be some relief for you.
Maybe, but still, the fact that they would put a two-family residential thing there would throw the flavor off right there.
Thank you for comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in, in opposition? An applicant's not here, so we're not going to make a rebuttal, so we, the public hearing is closed. And Jeff?
No comments.
Brian?
Just, what is, are there any other duplexes in that area? Is this the, will this be the first one in the area?
According to the, the land use information that's available through a GIS, there is a mix of one- and two-family dwellings in this neighborhood.
So this, okay. That's all I have at the moment.
Berkeley? Council Lady?
Thank you. I answered anything. I guess there is no specific site plan or anything at this point of what is planned to be put here. Do we know if it's an attached large thing or two separate or a de-due or something useful?
I, I do not know, because this is just a zone change request, so we do not have a plan. The, the property would be allowed one or two-family. Whether it would be duplex eligible is a determination made by codes. A de-due may also be an option, so, but we don't have a specific plan at this point.
And then the dimensions that were, that were just mentioned are 30 by 150, and I'm, I'm just trying to visualize that. My lot is 50 by 150, and it looks longer and skinnier than this one. Do we, can, can you confirm those dimensions?
The dimensions are 57 feet by 140 feet.
Okay, okay.
The, the image in front of you is, the blue square is skewed a bit, so it's not the best.
So it's 57 across the, across the front. So the possibility exists to have a house on the front that looks similar to the houses on the street, and then another house on the side street that would face the side street, or would it have to not, how, I mean, what would be required from a planning standpoint?
So from the, from the A district standards, it would require to be accessed off the alley, thinking through, I don't know off the top of my head how the buildings would have to be oriented under the code, but I will try to look into that as the other Commissioners speak.
Okay. This, I mean, you know, I think our, in general, we get all excited about A because it has some good, good design standards, but I certainly understand the neighbors' concern with feeling crowded and having what has been green space next to him covered with, with structure. So I'm going to, I'm going to listen to what my fellow Commissioners have to say.
Under R6A, they would be required to come in off the alley that would not be able to park in the front yard, so that has been verified. Lilly?
I had a question about just, I guess, the current landscape of the neighborhood. So there are, I guess, existing two-unit properties in this neighborhood. Is the, from the map that we were provided, it looks like the whole area or surrounding area is RS5, but is that right?
The, we, staff did not research whether the existing two-family dwellings that show up in land use were new or permitted in any way, just that they were two-family. It's possible that there are existing duplexes in the area that were there prior to the current zoning, but there, there are a mix of one- and two-family there presently.
I know we don't know that, well, because it's a Metro Code decision, we don't know if the lot is duplex eligible. I'm assuming that the applicant believes it is duplex eligible.
And in speaking with codes, they have indicated to me that it is as well, although they would confirm that in their review of the building permit process.
Okay. I mean, I am pathetic to the neighbor. I would not probably want something like this coming in if I was not, you know, used to having anyone living by me after the house there burned down. I mean, it does seem like the duplex would be obviously consistent with the policy of being neighborhood evolving, and there are existing duplex lots there, right? And as you mentioned, it's a corner lot. I guess it's a little bit unfortunate that the applicant isn't here, who can't really, I guess, hear the full side of the story or both sides. So I'd still be interested in hearing what the rest of the Commissioners have to say.
Stuart, your time has come. You're the last speaker.
Really?
And if someone would set the clock for two minutes.
People right down here have much more to say than I do, I'm sure. But I'll be glad to take.
Inspire us.
You really did.
I told him I'd let him speak last, but quickly.
Yes, sir.
Don't ramble.
Almost, almost six o'clock. So looking at this, the, the map, everything we're seeing on this map on page 156 is zoned what right now? Is that true, everything is?
It is, it is a RS5 zoned area primarily.
And, and our, the proposal is to, to take one lot in the middle of all of this and make it R6A.
That's correct. Staff's evaluation was that the policy is evolving, which does call for some diversity of housing and for the neighborhood to increase housing choice and connectivity. The A districts are designed to create walkable neighborhoods, and this would allow for one or two-family potentially a de-due. And given that it was a corner lot with alley access, staff's determination and recommendation was that this might be an appropriate location for that.
Well, I hate to end my career on a down, down note, but I, I think it's, it's still unusual to me. I know it's a different sort of way of looking at it, but we used to think of these as spot zones, or maybe that was loose line. And our, the proposal is to, to take one lot in the middle of all of this and make it R6A?
That's correct. Staff's evaluation was that the policy is evolving, which does call for some diversity of housing and for the neighborhood to increase housing choice and connectivity. The A Districts are designed to create walkable neighborhoods, and this would allow for one- or two-family, potentially a dadu. And given that it was a corner lot with alley access, staff's determination and recommendation was that this might be an appropriate location for that.
Well, I hate to end my career on a down, down note, but I think it's, it's still unusual to me. I know it's a different sort of way of looking at it, but we used to think of these as spot zones, or maybe that was loose language, but, you know, you've got hundreds of lots here, and you're going to take one in the middle and make it something else. When I think of rezoning, I don't really think of lot-by-lot as much as this is, I really don't. I'm uncomfortable with it, and I don't think we should, I'm not going to make a motion to disapprove, I don't think, but because, you know, I'm sure the applicant thought maybe it wouldn't, he wouldn't need to be here, and maybe he has some compelling reasons I haven't heard. But I know this is, would not be terrible zoning. I just have a little problem with, with, with a piecemeal one-lot approach like this. So maybe I just can't vote for it today. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion, just kind of in light of that. I make a motion to disapprove.
Just a second.
I'm not really to vote for that one either, because I, I feel a little bit like it's a blindsiding. I mean, you can never assume that something's going to go off on consent because it's on consent, but there's, I don't know. Does anyone else feel that way?
I'll throw in two other thoughts. I mean, perhaps if we defer, the applicant can be here at the next meeting to talk about it. And I would feel more comfortable if I had a site plan, I mean, and maybe that's not necessary, but I would feel more comfortable if I knew what it was they were going to put there. And I guess that makes it an SP, so we really can't do that. Thank you for confirming that, but, but at least hearing from the applicant why he thinks it's a good idea might make a deferral more appropriate than an outright disapproval. But I did second the disapproval, because, because, I mean, I think, as a council member, I have refused to do this in my neighborhood, because as a neighborhood, we worked really hard to come up with what we thought was an appropriate policy, and because we thought we had a good mix that we thought we'd kind of freeze it right there. So to redo one lot at a time is, to some degree, disregarding what the community advocated for.
There's not a second, so if you want to make another motion, you can...
Well, actually, the Council lady seconded it.
But I can withdraw.
So we were on discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Cannot withdraw my second? No.
Well, we just take a vote on the motion.
Do I have to say it again? I'm sorry, I have to withdraw my motion?
No, no, we, the motion is properly before the Commission. We just need a vote, if there's no other discussion.
My only discussion is I, I, I would feel more comfortable, just in light of all the circumstances, deferring it, so even though I can't vote for it, I don't want to move to, I voted to disapprove today, so I'll be voting against this.
Can I make a motion to table the original motion?
Oddly, you can make a motion to table what you seconded.
But can we just, you guys don't have to vote for it.
You, you just call, could call for a vote, and then if it fails, then make a second motion.
Okay.
Then I'll call for the motion. We've got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion fails, is there another motion?
I move we disapprove so that smarter people can deal with this next time when I'm not... That we defer so that smarter people can...
Part of the motion needs to be that we will close the public hearing, so they can reopen that, because you and I won't be here, and there'll be two new people, so we need to start over fresh.
So I would move that...
It's going to be part of the motion to close the public hearing.
I would move that we close the public hearing and defer for one meeting.
Second?
Can I, point of order? Does that mean we can reopen the public hearing for the two minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, but yeah, I said, I'm confused. I don't want to close it.
I'm not sure if you're intentionally doing this on your last item or not.
If we leave the public hearing open, the two members, or the three now that aren't here, would have to review that to be able to participate in that. So by closing it, then they can start over a new discussion.
So I think I understand the Commission's desires right now, and it is, yeah, I think it's to defer it, and you haven't stated one or two meetings. Two meetings would be fantastic if you chose to do that, because the next meeting's going to be fairly brutal. But to defer it two meetings and leave the public hearing open, I believe that that's what I understand the discussion to...
If you leave it open, then the people that aren't here, no, you're right, I was thinking about that. That's why I'm, that's why I'm quitting.
So to be, to be clear, the people who aren't here will need to review what has gone before us tonight, but that will enable the applicant to speak at the next one, and anyone else who has opinions to speak at the next one.
That's correct. They would leave it open for the public to come back and speak at that hearing as well.
Motion there is to defer two meetings and leave the public hearing open, and that was a second. Okay. You've heard a motion all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. Anything, Ms. Stark?
Only that we're still kind of dealing with our dadus as well, as far as measuring them, you know? We're still having some issues with those, so I just, as far as how they're calculated. So we're trying to have a, some extra training on that, that we're trying to get together with all the Planning Commission, as well as building codes to try to get more of consistency with it.
Thank you. Parks? The staff? Speak then. Do they have anything from Parks?
We do, but she's not here. We're actually, they are hosting right now the retirement party for Tommy Lynch as we speak, and so he will be much missed. He's been a great guiding hand for this city for many years.
Anything from the courthouse?
I'd say sidewalks are the big thing right now.
Okay, I'm going to take a public, or a privilege here, and then I'll let Stuart speak. Really overwhelming today that the sitting mayor and the past mayor that first appointed Stuart and I to this position take time out to come to this commission. I've seen a couple of occasions where the mayor came the first time to say, here's going to be, here's, and bring the person with it, I think Carl brought Andre de Quir and said, this is the person that'll be representing me. And so there's very few times that the, that the mayor's come, former mayor, Priscilla has come on a couple of occasions representing people, but he came today in a capacity of not representing in one, but in honoring the time that Stuart and I came, and it's just kind of overwhelming to, for that to happen, especially with a sitting mayor. And so I leave today reluctantly, but I think 16 years is enough on any one commission, Stuart. Not that we shouldn't maybe serve on another commission, but, you know, you need to turn it over to other people, such as Lilly. You always do a great job, and congratulations on the upcoming wedding. You know, she was proposed to in Paris, I thought maybe she'd be going back to Paris for the, for the wedding, but, but she's not, she's just going to Maui. So enjoy. Brenda's left, and I'm very happy that she's on here, and Council lady, you and I have worked together on a lot of stuff in the past, and I thank you for your service, and know you'll continue to do that. Brian, you came over from historic. I sat on historic for a few meetings, and they finally got somebody else, because I think I was too liberal. But that's okay if they don't put dormers on, it doesn't matter, you know? So I didn't last long on historic, you know, representing here. Brian, welcome aboard, and Jeff, you and your father and I go back to, gosh, 1972, we were, he's now a Democrat and served on the, in the Senate as a Democrat, but at that time, Republican, and I used to knock on doors, and so, but you remained a Republican, so, you were taught well. But thank you, and thank you for your kind words while I go your card, and sorry that Craig had to leave, but Greg, he's been a great friend, and will remain that way, so we leave it in good hands, and there again, if somebody set the clock for two minutes, I'll let Stuart speak, and then we'll adjourn.
Well, I don't intend to speak for two minutes, because I'm afraid I need to get home, because my wife might have heard you say something about another board of commission, and I really need to reassure her that that will not happen. I've enjoyed this a great deal. Not that I'm counting or anything, it was 384 meetings, not counting work sessions, but that's enough, and I've enjoyed it. I think it's a great commission and a great staff, and I'm looking forward to watching you on TV every single, every other Tuesday night. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Go home.